This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, there's one on my desk. Okay. Here we are in the Heber City Council chambers. I'm Mayor Potter and we've gathered tonight in a town hall meeting because of a lot of questions about water. In this year, we have drought, we have heat, we have, and still a lot of development pressure in our city. And sometimes there's conversations on Facebook where it's hard to answer all of the questions and go into as much depth as I think people want to know in this city of what's going on. And then sometimes some things are answered and then they come up again and we don't always get them all. And so we just wanted to have a little meeting with some people who are experts on how some of these things work in our city. So what we'll do is we'll start by hearing, I'm going to have each of our panelists introduce themselves and why they're here. We have a brief presentation where we're going to touch on some, some of the big picture issues and share some information. And then we will be open to hear from each of our experts and hear from some Q and A. We have a board of adjustments meeting in here at six, so we'll go until a little before six if we have that many questions and that much information. And at that point, if there are more questions, we are always happy to answer them in a different forum, or you can email us, or we can get something out again on social media, or however, to make sure everyone feels like they've had other questions answered. When we get to the Q and A, I'll remind you again, and we have to have people speaking to the microphone because those joining us on GoToMeeting or Facebook won't be able to hear, well, they won't on Facebook anyway probably, but we will just make sure that everyone's introducing themselves and speaking to the microphone when that time comes. So to get started, I'm going to introduce our panelists or have them introduce themselves. And we'll start with Tony on this end and then we'll go down.
Tony Kohler, I am the Heber City Planner.
Max Covey, I'm the General Manager for North Village Special Service District.
And I'm Russell Funk, I'm the Assistant City Engineer for Heber City.
I'm Rick Malloy, the Water Conservation Manager for Central Utah Water Conservancy District.
Right, and thank you to our panelists. They didn't have a lot of notice, we were trying to put something together quickly so we could help get this information out. What we do have to start off with is a presentation that Tony will start with and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. Anthony, would you be able to help me on the presentation, please? Thank you. Mouse doesn't seem to be working this far away. I'll go ahead to the next slide. So there's no doubt, we're definitely in a drought. Wasatch County has an extreme drought status. This is on ABC's website, next slide. This comes from Fox 13. And what this map identifies, that Wasatch County uses water at a higher rate per capita than much of Utah. The dark blue counties are the highest per capita using counties. Next slide. The city has taken efforts to promote water conservation. In 2019, the city adopted a code amendment that specifically permits zero escaping. Zero escaping is a use of drought tolerant landscaping. Secondly, in 2021, this year, the city adopted the North Village Overlay Zone, and that limits turf grass to a maximum of 60% of any yard. The city does not have that requirement and has not had that requirement in any of the cities. So all of us residents that live here in the city have not had that imposed upon us. Next slide. Additionally, a significant development area called the Sorensen Properties have a limitation of 1,000 square feet of sod for any home. Next slide. As the city grows, we are going to get much of our water from a different source. And that's why we have Max Covey here, he's with the North Village Special Service District. And that's where most of our growth area is going to get its water, it's from a different source. Heber City's traditional sources have been up Lake Creek and have been from typically from underground wells. Next slide. Just as a reminder, water rights are very complex. We probably don't have enough time to explain how they all work tonight. But a brief 101 on one slide is that all water use in Utah requires a water right. You can't just move in somewhere and say, hey, there's a stream, I'm going to use that water. You have to have a water right in order to use water. And those water rights come from irrigated land and the Jordan L Reservoir. And when a developer comes to the city, a developer has to have a water right and has to turn that water right over to the water provider. The process is complex, to oversimplify it, there's a city development process, a state engineer process, irrigation company process, and a water provider process. Next slide. The question has been posed, should the city impose a moratorium due to drought concerns? The city can do a moratorium, but only temporarily. And in order to do that, the city has to find a compelling countervailing public interest finding. And this is going to be difficult, given that the city and district water sources remain resilient throughout the drought. Secondly, a moratorium only stops growth for six months. Next slide. How does growth address water? I've already indicated that developers have to bring to the table water rights to give to the city. The city does several things, one of which is periodic water level and quality checks in its wells according to state requirements. Each new home that comes into the city has to pay an impact fee to cover the cost for new water infrastructure. And there are periodic updates to our infrastructure plans that our engineers do to make sure that we have adequate sources, that we have adequate storage capacity and distribution lines for our water system. Next slide. Another question that's been posed recently is, why should we conserve water? Aren't you just making me save water so a developer can come in and use that water? And, and the answer is no. The real reason is we want to avoid costs. There's going to be other panelists here that are going to tell you other reasons. This slide indicates that a major reason to conserve water is cost. If we all waste water, it means we have to build new water sources and we have to build new water tanks and expand our water treatment facilities in order to deal with that waste. If we don't waste that water, we can avoid doing all those things. We can also avoid increases to energy related with water pumping out of our wells. We can decrease our impact to the groundwater supply. It also costs money to treat water, either with chemicals or mechanical treatment that we drink. And if we waste water, that just drives up all of our costs to do that. And manpower costs. Next slide. Why else should we conserve water? Minimize the impact to others. If we waste water, there is a risk that our system may not handle all that waste. And we only have limited capacity in our system to provide pressure, capacity, and flow. So we want to make sure that all of our users have water when you shower. You want to make sure that when you shower, the water is doing what it's supposed to. Another important reason is fire suppression. If we are wasting water, we are threatening our capacity and flow for our firefighters to put out fires. And then finally, I mentioned this, the pollution from energy use from pumps and associated energy. Next slide. There are other things the city can do, and I think we will see some of these ideas come up. They've come up in the past and other, there are certainly 1,000 other ideas for water conservation. One of them is to install irrigation meters. Most of the state is going that way. We do not meter our secondary irrigation and I'm sure there's a lot of waste. And that will be something that we'll be facing pretty soon. We can also use tiered water fees. The example I have up here is your first 3,000 gallons cost $2.84. And as you increase your usage over that, your cost goes up to maybe $3.26 and on up and up. And so the more you use, the more you pay. Next slide. And of course, the other one is to see what we can do individually and as a city to revise our facilities landscaping to better use our water. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I think what we'll do now is just allow each of our panelists, if they have something, zoom that out, that they want to add, and then we'll go to Q and A. So if there's something you just want to make as a general statement to help educate people, and then we can go into more specific questions that people have.
Sure, thank you. So again, my name's Max Covey, I'm the General Manager for North Village Special Service District. One thing I just wanted to mention, there, there has been a lot of questions about water rights and they are very complicated and difficult to understand. I don't know that I fully understand them, but I do my best. One of the questions is, is you know, how can all this growth, how can we continue to have all this growth when certain areas are under restrictions? One thing I wanted to, I kind of explain maybe a little more in depth is that, is that Tony touched on it. Developers are required to convey the water, so they have the same water right possibly that a lot of the Heber, Heber City residents have. And what they have to do is they have to go through the change application through the state engineer. The state engineer reviews that water right and quantifies it. And then that water, so say there's a development out in North Village or somewhere in that area, that water then would have to be conveyed to the water district or the city or whoever it may be. So the water has to be in place for a development prior to issuing a will serve letter. So will serve letters, what we issue saying, okay, from this point on, the water's in place, now we can serve you. So we ensure, at least on the North Village SSD, and we ensure that the water is in place and the adequate amount prior to the development moving forward. So that's one, one thing I wanted to explain. The other thing is, it's, it's a little bit difficult to, I guess, be, see all these restrictions. So many of the service districts that we service and manage and operate are under restrictions. So we follow the State Watering Guide for Outdoor Irrigation. And so right now, that's set at two irrigation cycles per week. And so we've asked all of our residents, first, we ask them to voluntary, voluntarily follow that State Watering Guide. We have now mandated that in a couple of the service districts that we operate to, because our sources are not producing the amount that they typically have in the past. For example, we have one source that's producing roughly about 60% of its normal flow. So we've reduced those customers. With that, you know, as you see this development moving forward, homeowners have the water right that was conveyed for their indoor use and their outdoor use, they have that water right. So do these developers. So when a homeowner in Heber City or Wasatch County or some, somewhere in this area sees restrictions, the developer that has the same water right would be restricted as well. So that's, that's their water right, they own the water right, you have a water right, you own it. Everyone is restricted to the amount that that source produces. So that's just one thing I kind of wanted to clarify and, you know, hopefully that gets the wheels turning and generates some questions. I'd be happy to answer any after or a phone call to my office and, and help out in any way I can. Thank you.
I was going to add to that, sometimes people will ask me, and I, I use this dumbed down illusion to say, if all of our water rights are like a big pie and we all have a piece of pie, if we have a drought, we don't get to say, you don't get to have a piece because you're late coming here, we all just have to have a smaller piece. Is that fair?
Correct, and that's where, you know, it's difficult to understand sometime for some people, I guess, and, and hard to, nobody wants to be restricted in water use. You know, that is a right that we all have and, you know, we all hope to, is always going to be there for us. But the somewhere, somewhere else, someone, somewhere else has the same water right, that's their water right. So just because everyone is restricted, doesn't necessarily mean that you get to use their water right to make you whole. Right? So they have a water right as well that is restricted to the same amount that you are.
Thank you. All right, we're going to jump over here to Russ.
A couple of things, one, I guess the first one kind of adds to that, that same concept that you're talking about. Just to clarify that typically when developers come in for a new development, they're not, they're not making up a new water right or a new water right isn't coming into, into play at that point. It's an existing right that they have. Most of the time, I mean, if you look at a field that was being irrigated before, that water right was there irrigating the field and then it gets converted into the new use of, of development. And so it's not, it's not that new water rights are being made up or, or taking away from what other people have. So that same concept that you guys were talking about. The other thing I wanted to point out from Tony's presentation, yeah, it is true, Heber City is currently not metering many of our irrigation services. Couple of years ago, the state came out and mandated that irrigation services are metered and that everybody start metering new services and put a plan in place to, to convert existing connections to being metered. And so Heber City is doing that, we're moving forward with a plan to get all of our irrigation services metered. City Council is budgeted, I don't remember the exact number, $400,000 to $500,000 every year. And it's, and it's kind of in the long-term plan for about five years to do that. Additionally, we went out and got a grant to help match our money. And we're trying to kick that process off with, with implementing metering for irrigation services. So we are, we are following the, the guidelines and getting started in that direction. That's about all I have for, to start.
Yeah, and just to introduce myself again, Rick Malloy with Central Utah Water Conservancy District. I'm the Water Conservation Manager there. I've been working closely with Max and with Heber City and Wasatch County to help implement plans and provide funding for a lot of different opportunities to conserve water in their parks, helping with meters. It's really important that we participate in that and in water conservation and getting the, the information out there. We talked a little bit about, you know, the need for watering less or using less water in a drought. It's critical this year. Even though we may have water right now, if trends continue and we have a poor winter, it just means that there's even more strain on the systems that we have in place. And so allowing everybody to do their part, you know, prevents more future restrictions or tighter restrictions on, on water use in the future. And I think that's really important that, you know, we can spend a lot of time pointing fingers at others and hoping others do their part in, in water conservation. And it really takes everybody and everybody has to do it together. And I know that the city is working aggressively to look at ways that they can use their water better, more wisely. So, and that's probably all I have for now, but happy to answer any questions on water conservation. I guess I'll add one more thing, we do have, starting the first of August, so this Sunday, we're going to be offering to all Wasatch County residents a Flip Your Strip Incentive Program. So we're going to provide funding for any resident who wants to remove their lawn and their park strip. Of course, it has to meet city code. And then also a land, what we call local escapes rewards. And that provides an additional incentive for those who would like to do more water wise landscaping throughout their entire landscape, front yard, backyard, and, and the rest. And we also have funding for commercial landscapes, parks, other things like that. So we're really, we know that more than 60% of our municipal and industrial water goes to our outdoor landscapes. And most of that water is, is wasted or overused. So we can really work together to, to put in more sustainable landscapes, including in future development and growth, making sure that what that looks like is, is more suited for our climate here, so.
Excellent, thank you. All right, with that, we will go to Q and A. We can accept questions on the GoToMeeting. And we can accept questions on Facebook Live, we can accept questions in person. If you're here in person, we're going to start with in-person for those who are online. We're asking people to come up to the microphone, state their name. We're going to limit you to three minutes if you're making it more of a comment than a question. But we would love to address some of the questions that people have and make sure we're, we've covered everything. So with that, if there's anyone in the room that has a question, we'd love to have you come up to the microphone. We've got the people here ready to answer.
I'll break the ice. Tracy Taylor, Heber City resident. First off, that incentive, where can we find that information? Can we get it on the Heber City website or something where people have a way to get that?
That's a great question, and I should have mentioned that. You can apply for that at utawatersavers.com. But I will make sure and give the information to Heber City so that they can push that out.
A link right to it would be great. I've actually got a few questions, so I don't know if you'll indulge me, but I'll start. I'd like to know if Heber City and regionally, if we have a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, a 20-year plan? I mean, I know we, we're talking like today snapshot, this is where we're at. But I think as a community, we want to know, as you mentioned, the trends don't look good. And I just heard a statement on the news that it would take 10 years of an above average snow year to even get us back to normal, to where we are now. So that's not going to happen. I mean, I think we can all say maybe if we're lucky, five of those years might be above average and maybe another three are average or three are below and two are average. I don't know if we're ever going to catch up. And I think as a community, we look to you guys to go, we need a plan. And we'd like to see you guys all working together and, you know, any way we can help as residents to do that. But I think we need to start looking seriously at a 10, 20-year plan because I have major concerns about some of this. One of which is CUP does concrete all the ditches and now we're, most of the agriculture is on sprinkler pressurized irrigation. They're not flood irrigated anymore. So I'm concerned about our aquifers throughout the whole valley, whether you're on a private well or the Heber Aquifer is what we use for our water. How are we going to replenish that aquifer system and what's the plan? Because I know you tried to preserve the water from being wasted by flooding, but it also did replenish our aquifers, so.
Do you want me to address some of that there? So I, I guess the first one is, the city does have a water conservation plan. It's a plan that we've updated every five years. The last update was 2016. And so we are actually currently in the process of getting that plan updated again this year. And, and partially due to the circumstances we're in, we're looking to add a more significant water conserva- or a restriction, section on restrictions. And what do we do under these drought situations? It was in there before, but we're trying to beef that up. There was, there was, and his goals in that as far as reduction and, and water savings, which so far we're on target to meet. The state has some guidelines too in their, in their water conservation report that were, that they, that they have for the state. And we're close to being on target with that. I was, this presentation, I was looking at that and it was showing us as being some of the highest per capita water users in the state. And, and I think that that's true, but the goal that they've set for us in their report, I think we're on target to reach. The trend, we are trending downward in water usage, although the overall demand is, is of course going up with development. What else did you touch on? You touched on aquifer.
Aquifers.
So we have been monitoring our, our well sources and our drawdown in our wells. We haven't seen this year significant changes. We are down, I mean, there's, there's always seasonal adjustments as we go throughout the season. We have seen a drop a few feet different than, than prior year. So it is, it is down. We haven't seen anything too significant that really, really concerns us at this point. I think the point that was made is that it's going to be in the future. Are we going to get better years? Are we going to be able to recover? Because you're right, if we stay, if we stay with drought conditions like this, there's going to have to be more changes than, than we've made. But so far, those well sources haven't seen a significant drop that has us really worried at the city.
But those policy decisions of concreting ditches and pressurized irrigation in the short term, it's, it's great for conservation. One last question and then I'll go. The state of Utah over the last 10 years has been discussing this. And they have seen a disparity between paper shares, paper water, and wet water. So it all sounds great when you say, everybody gets a share and they have it and they deserve it and they get it. But there's already a disparity between the paper water and the wet water. And so maybe you can explain that a little bit more to the public and, and what the differences are and then why that's a big deal moving forward. Thank you.
I'll, I'll jump on that just briefly, there, there is quite a bit to that. But Tracy, to your, your comments, I agree, the aquifer is definitely something that needs to be looked at. And as we, as we go down this conservation path, we can tend to dry things up. You know, I've lived here my whole life and we used to flood irrigate. It's going away from that for a good reason, right? It's more, you know, you can, it's, it's more, there's a lot of more conservation efforts when you're sprinkling water than flooding and different things like that. But there's some side effects from that. There are some irrigation companies in Central Utah and different companies that do have some recharge channels. They try to put, put back, water back into the aquifer and try to balance that the best they can. But as far as the, the paper water and the, and wet water, there is a difference there. And you're probably, a lot of you are aware, the state's going through this adjudication process. And they're up here in our valley right now doing that, verifying that the, there's, the number of water rights that an irrigation company has matches their irrigated land within their service areas. So they're looking at that as well. But the, as far as the wet water versus paper water, some of the systems that I work with right now, there's one in particular that one share of water is typically nine acre feet for one share. This, this year, it's producing six. And so that, that's up, but everyone gets reduced to six. So it's up and down, so the same water rights or shares are in place. It's just everybody gets reduced depending on what that source produces that year. And so if we continue down this and next year it produces four acre feet instead of nine, everyone's going to be reduced to that level. As far as, so we convert those to a year-round municipal, it goes through the state engineer and, and we take the fully consumptive portion of that. So to get the culinary water right for what, for an indoor use within our districts, it requires .45 acre feet of fully consumptive water. So it takes an acre foot of water to get the .45. And this is determined through the irrigation company and the state engineer, what it takes to get that. The rest of the water is diverted back to the stream. So that has to stay in the stream, we can only use the fully consumptive portion for the indoor use. But I don't know if that helps answer the question, but the water sources and the water rights associated with them, they're going to fluctuate and, and that's where restrictions come into place. And I think as Russ mentioned earlier, these irrigation companies and water companies are not creating more water rights to accommodate the growth. They're just existing ones that are in place that are going to fluctuate up and down as the years, you know, fluctuate and the source does as well. But, but I, I agree with your statements and, and it is a concern, that's something that we try to monitor. We typically, most of our sources are surface water, water treatment plants, different things like that. We utilize a lot of the Jordan L water, project water in the Jordan L reservoir. And there's some, I believe, Rick, that's a five to seven year, seven year storage in- And there's some, I believe, Rick, that's a five to seven-year, seven-year storage in, in Jordanell Reservoir. But, but yeah, we need to hopefully get ahead of that. As far as conservation, it's just a smart thing to do. That is something that everyone needs to do, whether you have the right to use the water or not. It's still the smart thing and the thing that we all need to do to, to ensure that there's enough water, not only for us, but for future generations and our kids and things like that, along with smart planning and all these other things that we need to consider.
Is it true, Max, that part of this adjudication will fix that problem that Tracy mentioned where there's more shares on paper, where some people are actually going to lose those because they have rights they haven't used or they don't get to have it anymore?
So, so that's what they're looking at. So the state's regulation or the state standard is three acre feet of water per irrigated acre. So that's a state standard. So that's what they're going to each county irrigation company and looking at that to see how many shares they have or how many rights they have in their company and make sure that matches the irrigated acreage in there. If there's more or less, they'll adjust accordingly.
All right. Any other questions from the people in the room? Yeah, come on up.
Hi, my name is Richard Getz. I'm just curious, once you put all the meters on the irrigation systems, what happens after that? Do people then get billed for their usage whereas they're not getting billed presently?
Ultimately, that will be a policy decision by the, by the city council and mayor. My opinion is that eventually that's going to happen. Right now, it was going to take several years before everybody's metered anyway. And so it wouldn't really be fair initially to, to charge some people based on, on metered use and others not. But I suspect, Mayor, that sometime that, that decision will be made, but it really is, it's going to be up to your, your city leader.
Yeah, I suspect it will as well because currently everyone just pays a flat fee and it's not much of an incentive if you just think, it doesn't matter if I turn off the water, I'm still paying the same amount. So I think once we have the ability to measure it, it'll be just like culinary water where people pay a certain amount for so many gallons. And then, you know, they'll pay what they use. So if someone that's really landscaping in a water-wise way will spend, will use less water and pay less money. I don't know how many years that will take, but that's the goal ultimately.
I have something to add to that. What we're seeing with most of the areas that are metering is just the information alone, providing people what they should be using is, is an effective tool at conservation. So we're seeing roughly a 20% to 30% reduction. And that's not without charging, that's just with providing the information of what they should be using. And that's important too, that, you know, even before you start billing, you'll probably see the savings from implementing those, those metering projects.
Thank you. Right, any other questions in the room we can address?
Just one more thing on that. I had a meeting with Public Works yesterday and they let me know that with these new meters that we're installing, the availability for people to monitor their usage is, is coming along with that. It's not something that's been sent out to everybody because everybody doesn't have it yet. But as that, as, as they're putting in those new meters, they are talking to people and letting them know there is an app, there's a website, you can go and monitor your usage. And so just what you're saying, we hope is going to happen. We're going to see that reduction.
Excellent. Anybody else in the room have a question? Anybody online? Trinity, do you see on go-to meeting? I don't know. Oh, okay. Who? Ben, Ben Hughes, do you have a question?
I didn't know that I had a question. It's actually not Ben Hughes, it's Dave Nelson.
Oh, hi Dave, it just says Ben Hughes on your thing and it's unmuted.
It does because he, he's the one who usually controls our screen at the office.
Okay, well, if you, do you have anything you want to ask or say?
Yeah, I, I had a couple of things. One, I really appreciate the explanation for, for people about how a water right is used. One thing that I thought it might be helpful, and you've explained it when you explained the example of the pie. I've just always used it that a water right is a percent of the total, a percent of the total. And if the total is a smaller total for that year, your percent that you get of it is a smaller number. And it's just easier for people to comprehend that just because they were first to start using the water doesn't mean that they have a proprietor, proprietary right to a certain number of gallonage. They have a right to a certain percent of the total, just like anybody. And, and you've done a really good job of explaining that. I think one misconception that a lot of people have is that when a neighborhood or when a 10-acre parcel or five-acre, 15-acre parcel converts from farming irrigation to development housing, there's a perception that they're using more water. And that is the exact opposite of reality. It actually takes much more water to irrigate land. And I think that's one of the reasons why Wasatch County shows such a high usage per capita is because of how much, how many small, what I would call mostly hobby farms are, are using a substantial amount of water in compared to the total population that we have. But in almost all cases where you convert a piece of ground to a development, unless it was industrial or commercial, the likelihood of, well, first of all, no one would be able to use more water, but in most cases, there is leftover water shares than, than what was being used on the farm.
Thanks, Dave. I just learned that this year too. I didn't realize that irrigation took more than residential, so that's an important point. Thank you. All right, anybody else? There was one more thing I thought we should talk about and it's, do you have something? Oh, hi Roger, thanks for coming.
Just going to add one thing to that, Dave. We kind of find that if you develop a quarter acre lot subdivision, then it about breaks even. So the amount of, if you had 10 acres, the amount of water to irrigate 10 acres is the same amount of water to develop a quarter acre lot type subdivision. If you go lower density or, yeah, lower density, you, you can use a little bit less water. If you go higher density, like Village on 12th, for example, they use almost double the amount of water. So it's less per capita if you do high density, but that 10 acres requires more water than the farm did. So I just wanted to add that clarification. You're, you're using less per capita because you're packing more people on 10 acres. But you are using more water than that land needed. So, so an additional water supply has to come from somewhere else. In Heber City, a lot of times that comes because Walmart developed or Power Industrial Park developed and they had a bunch of water. It's an industrial, commercial use. Their outside irrigation is very low. And so that makes some additional water available out there. And a developer could go purchase that water to supply a, a higher density development lot. So just wanted to clarify that little.
Thank you.
It's a good point. If I could just, just to give you some information on Heber City, obviously, that's, that's a very good point. I was thinking the same thing as, as that conversation, that point was made. But on average, right now, the indoor component of an ERU or an equivalent residential unit is, is in the 60 to, well, outdoor is 60 to 70% of the total usage. So indoor is, is 30 to 40% of the total usage. So more water is being used outside on a typical residential property than, than indoors.
One question I think might be informative for everyone that you experts can answer. You know, we obviously have what's normal and what's not normal. And, and I know that in, in this valley, we're lucky because we're between two reservoirs and we probably are in less dire straits than many other areas. I'm wondering what percentage of normal we are. Clearly, if we were down at 5%, we definitely would be imposing strict, you know, restrictions about watering outdoors, et cetera. What percentage are we right now? Do we know? I should have told you had, I was just thinking about that because I know I've heard, I've seen maps of different, you know, what, what percentage of normal is the Jordanell? What percentage of normal? I know as you monitor those things, there must be a.
So I think this morning, the percent of normal for Jordanell was 60%.
60, okay.
And Deer Creek was, was right around there. And so, you know, we're, we're in a better situation, like you said, than some areas, particularly because of the size of the reservoirs that we have. And like Max mentioned, you know, Jordanell is a five-year storage reservoir, Strawberry is seven years. So we have larger storage that's designed to weather these types of droughts. You know, they're put into place so that if there's a bad year of drought, we can continue to provide water. The challenge comes is that if we continue to have bad years of drought, that really pulls and draws against that, that storage that we do have. And much like the comment earlier, it does take a longer time for it to bounce back. But, you know, currently we're in, you know, it's, it's a tough situation, but it's not, you know, we're not in crisis mode yet.
So I've heard of cities throughout the state that are cutting off their irrigation water early. Do we anticipate cutting our irrigation water early this year for the residents who have that?
So a lot of that depends on the irrigation company and how much water they've already used. So again, they get an allotment for that period of time. If they started really early in the season, they may be forced to discontinue the water just because that's all the water that they, that they have a right to. But for most of our service area, we're looking at being able to provide the, the water throughout the season. Areas that you hear about are usually areas that have really small reservoirs or rely on natural flow. And where the streams dry up, that, that's their only source of water. And so they, they don't have any choice but to discontinue. Something that's also really important to note is that in most situations, especially with Jordanell, it provides not only landscape water, but culinary water. And so, you know, if you shut off your secondary water or your outdoor water and then switch to culinary, a lot of times it's the same source, same thing with wells. So, you know, you, you don't want to, you know, get the idea that using culinary is a more stable source than, than secondary water. A lot of times in most situations, they're coming from the same, same supply.
But it's fair to say that the more that everyone conserves, the longer the supply will last.
Correct.
Okay, this year at least, for now. Yeah, Roger. What?
I don't know better, but specific.
We want everything the best you can give us.
So just to give you an idea of the way that our irrigation companies work in the valley, before Jordanell, our entire valley, except for maybe Spring Creek and Charleston, would be out of water this year. So before pressurized irrigation and before Jordanell Reservoir, pretty much everybody in the valley would be done irrigating. Our water rights are direct flow water rights on the Provo River, meaning there's a lot of money in the bank in Jordanell and Deer Creek. Unfortunately, it's not our money, right? So just because there's water in the, in the reservoir doesn't mean it's our water. That being said, we do have a little bit of water that the irrigation companies have, storage from the upper lakes. So some of that, you know, the pioneers of this valley went to the upper lakes. They built trial, Washington, you know, upper lake, lakes up there and they have storage. Some of that water is stored in Jordanell. And then the Central Utah Project also made 12,000 acre feet of water available to this valley. So companies like Tempanogus Extension, Sagebrush Irrigation Companies, who didn't have any storage or didn't have good direct flow rights would be out of water today. But those companies bought water in the Central Utah, some Central Utah Project water. And so now, the Provo River today is about 30% of first class, meaning there's very little water in the river. Our water rights are based on that very little water in the river. So anything that we take out of our very little sliver of the river, we get to take. Every day, we get to take it as long as it's there. Anything we use over and above that goes into those storage categories, upper lakes or Central Utah Project water. So due to the irrigation companies having foresight, getting storage, it's allowed us to even have irrigation water now. That being said, everything we use over and above our little sliver counts against our storage. We have a finite amount of storage in, in Jordanell. Every bit we use over and above what we anticipate we're going to use, shortens our irrigation season. And so conservation today is critical. Some of the irrigation companies, so Lake Creek Irrigation Company, like Max has been alluding to, has been cut 40%. Center Creek Irrigation Company is at 25% of their, so they've been cut 75%. Annual Irrigation Company has cut 30%. Wasatch Irrigation Company, which Heber City is a big component of that, has been cut 30% in hopes that they can extend it in September. The Heber City ditches were cut about 70% as well, also in hopes to extend till into September. So any, any conservation we do today, when it's raining, when it's cool, is water that we will get at the end of the season. So kind of like Rick was explaining, if we conserve it, it extends out our, our season. Also, some of that water can be carried over. So if we don't use all of our storage, some of that we get to use next year for a similar situation. So that, all that being said, I think we're in a pretty good spot to make it into September on our, our current trajectory. Chris, Chris coordinates with the River Commissioner every week and, and daily, actually, to, to make sure that we know about where we're at. We're probably going to get cut below 30% and it could even go as low as 10%, which probably hasn't happened, at least in my time and maybe ever, which just means that our little sliver in the river gets smaller and smaller. And every day we use water, we cut into our storage. So conservation today is so critical if you want water later into the season. But as of today, we're hopeful we're going to make it first, second week of September on most companies, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Tracy, will you go to the microphone?
Oh. Thanks, I have a couple more questions. That was one of my questions was what percentage of, of Jordanell is ours and what goes down to Provo? And then, or around Jordanell? And the second question is, you know, Jordanell dealt with water reservation fees for 20 years that they paid off. North Village has water reservation fees that just got paid off. What happens if we don't have enough water in 20 years to make everybody whole on all these water reservation fees that we thought was a great idea 20 years ago? Thanks.
So the water reservation fees are actually water rights. So they just pay the, the water, the assessments. It's basically like paying an assessment, right? So Jordanell Special Service District and North Village have project water in Jordanell Reservoir. So it's sitting there waiting for someone to use it. And so a lot of it's leased water through Salt Lake Metro and Sandy City. We have the Ontario Drain Tunnel, things like that. So it's leased water that's there. It's not water that we have to create, it's there waiting to be used. And these reservations are paying the assessments for that water. So we have to lease it from Salt Lake Metro and other leases that we have. And it's in the Jordanell Reservoir. So that's what the water reservations are, is basically paying us to lease that in, it's a perpetual lease with Salt Lake Metro and these other companies to pay those leases until the water's used, right?
Well, but the water reservations are tied to ERUs, aren't they? I mean, some people think they're going to get a certain amount of ERUs based on their water reservation. So it's actually tied to density, isn't it?
Acre feet. So we, we reserve water per acre foot.
So if everybody's water goes down in 20 years and there's less of it and they get each a percentage of the whole, as we talked about, that will automatically drop the ERUs that are allowed on that property, correct?
If, it would, it would reduce the amount of acre feet, right? So if there's, if there. So if there's, if they're, like the Ontario Drain Tunnel, we'll use that for an example. So it's a fairly steady flow, but it, if it fluctuates and goes down, then then there's, it's not, not there, right? That while it's not producing, but the the storage component, again, everyone, everyone is is utilizing storage component of Jordanell Reservoir and different things like that. We reserve the water per acre foot. And they do base the, their densities and different things off that, not necessarily. So one thing we need to remember is, so the the water right really doesn't dictate the ERU. At least, we do not dictate the density, right? That is a planning zoning function. Okay, it's not the water companies that dictate what the densities go in what place. Alls we, alls we do is say, this is the water required. Does he, is it available? Do they have it? Have they conveyed that to us? Can we serve them? If yes, then move forward. If no, then stop. We don't have the water for you. You have to go procure it. If you don't have reserved water and have used up all the reserved water you have, that developer then has the option to go through the state, change application, convey that water to the district, and then if there is enough, then proceed. Does that make sense, Tracy?
Yeah, I, it's complicated. I mean, we're, we're getting into future issues, which is why I'd love to see a 10- or 20-year plan. And then just percentage of Jordanell that isn't ours, that is going somewhere else. That would be good for everybody, because they see a lake out there, and they think it's all coming to us, and it's not.
Correct.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Russ, Susan, Susan, do you have a question online? You're unmuted, Susan Lee? Susan Lee? Hmm. Maybe not. Okay, if there's no one else, is there anyone else in the room that has anything? Or anybody of our experts want to add anything? We've got lots of experts in the audience. We've got them up here. All right. Well, that's about the end of our time anyway. So, did you have something? Yeah, from our city attorney. Go ahead, Mark.
Mark Smithley, that, Roger, I appreciate that detailed presentation, and I agree with everything that's been indicated. And I would just also add pursuant to the attorney that's handling the water for Wasatch County, Heber City, and many of the other communities, she would agree wholeheartedly that planning has been done, and the conservation is preemptively helping as per plan. And we're in a constrained time, but we're in a good position to be able to, be able to have that water in storage, be able to use into September. She would, she would mirror everything that you've said and say that we're in a tough position, but not in any dire straits. The water adjudication, and Tracy was talking about, is flowing well, we're using it, we're leasing it, and we're in a good position for Wasatch County, one of the best, really, in the adjudication throughout all the districts in Utah.
Excellent. Thank you. And one of the things we've thought as a city is educating people about about conservation, you know, before they're mandated, whoever's, oh, they muted. Educating people, helping people understand that there are a lot of great ways that we can save money and encouraging it before we are at a point where we have to mandate it. It helps people kind of gradually adjust and learn. You know, I think most, historically, everyone's overwatered their lawns. We, you know, I've seen so many people that think they have to water every day or short times. And to learn what what lawns really take, and to be able to do some of these things in preparation for a possible time when we are in dire straits, that could happen. Hopefully, it won't. But we feel like as a city, we're being responsible. We're doing everything that we can do to try and monitor this and make sure that we're all in good shape with what we need is water. So thank you to our experts for being here. Thank you to those who came and commented in the audience and the questions. Please know that we will answer any questions at any time if anyone has anything further. We're happy to distribute more information. We're happy to put it out in any format to make sure that we're answering all the questions. So thank you so much for coming, and wraps it up.